Good evening, everyone. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available in the file pockets near the entrance or online on the City of Waterville website. All items appearing on the consent agenda are voted on in one motion and vote. Generally, these items are routine in nature and do not require discussion. All items listed under unfinished business or new business are voted on separately. First, councilors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments. Once all councilors have had an opportunity to speak, citizens will be given an opportunity for comments or questions. Citizens must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Each citizen will be allowed one opportunity to speak and will be limited to three minutes. Finally, the councilors will be given another opportunity to speak.
Hey Patty, would you unmute?
Citizens who would like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the end, at, under the public comment section of the agenda. And we will start with a mayoral proclamation, which I will read on behalf of the mayor. This is in honor of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Whereas every child is precious and deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nurturing environment, free from the threats, dangers, and harmful effects of child abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse occurs at every socioeconomic level, across ethnic and cultural lines, within all religions, and at all levels of education. And whereas child abuse and neglect impacts our entire society and can cause traumatic, psychological, emotional, and physical harm, which can lead to detrimental behaviors and mental and physical illnesses as children and into adulthood. And whereas child abuse is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious organizations, nonprofits, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas youth-serving prevention programs offer positive alternatives for young people and encourage youth to develop strong ties to their community. Whereas all residents should become more aware of child abuse and its prevention, and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Waterville, I do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse and Neglection Prevention Month, and urge all residents to dedicate themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all our children by continuing the work of family support that has been celebrated this month year-round. And I'd like to invite Erin Witham, who's the Director of Social Services at KVCAP, to come and accept this proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say a few words?
Sure. I'll just say on behalf of KVCAP and all our partners, we very much appreciate this. And for anyone who's interested in learning more about our activities this month to raise awareness about the prevention of child abuse and neglect, you can find more information at KVCAP's website, kvcap.org. On April 28th, we'll be having a child abuse awareness vigil at the Alphon Youth Center. So I invite everyone, and there's lots of events happening throughout the community this month. All right. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. I invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Disclosure of conflict of interest. We'll move on to city reports. City manager, please.
So, as usual, my city manager's report is available in your materials and on the website as well for distribution and reading for people. First thing I'd like to do is actually introduce interim chief Bonnie to introduce our community outreach coordinator to the council and those that are present.
Good evening. Tonight, I am here to introduce Todd Stevens as our new community outreach coordinator. Todd has a Bachelor of Science in Mental Health and Human Services from the University of Maine Augusta, Associate in Psychology from the University of Phoenix. He is a mental health rehabilitation technician, crisis service provider. He's a certified alcohol and drug counselor, and he comes to us with 10 years in the field. He's been with us for a week now, and he's already making a real difference in the community. He's got over 30 citizen contacts in the first week, plus he's arranged meetings with the school department, the homeless shelter, the soup kitchen, the hospitals, and other liaisons across the street, across the state, sorry, so they can kind of coordinate what they're doing with each other. So I'll just introduce Todd real quickly.
Thank you. Thank you to the council and the City of Augusta and the city of citizens for, you know, putting this position into place. I think statewide, we're seeing the need for positions such as this. And certainly, having worked with the Waterville Police Department in the past as part of the midnight team with crisis and counseling, mental health and substance abuse in the City of Waterville is something that is pretty prevalent and occupies a lot of the officer's time. And my goal is to outreach these individuals and provide them an opportunity to be connected to resources, hopefully before they reach the level of needing contact with law enforcement, to allow the officers to deal with some of the other situations that, you know, community members have voiced the need to address. You know, you certainly see through social media and things of that nature, the community's concern for, you know, drugs. And we often hear, well, why isn't law enforcement doing anything about it? Unfortunately, the number of mental health calls and dealing with the homeless population who are struggling to connect to resources is occupying a lot of time. So my, my goal is to really get in the trenches with the community and let them know that there are resources and that both, you know, the city, the police department, we're here to try to get them connected and hopefully see a turn in what's been going on and the struggles that the community's having. And it's been a very positive first week as a meeting with individuals to just hear them say, it's nice that there's somebody we can turn to. And they've got a lot of questions. It's a, I think we agree, a position that's going to evolve and probably grow and change in many ways, but we're committed to it. I'm committed to making it successful, and I look forward to working with the community and the council as a whole, and certainly can answer any questions or attempt to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Well, we're thrilled that you're here, Todd. It's been, it's been quite a wait, but even in the first week, I've been hearing amazing things about you. So welcome, and thank you so much for stepping into this role. It's still critical for us.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Just to highlight a couple of other things in my report, I've stated in there that City Hall will be closing on April 20th and 21st. I want to clarify that a bit. So the customer service office will be closing, which is the basically tax collectors and city clerk's office, where motor vehicle registrations, tax payments, and those things are collected. So that office will be closed on the 20th and 21st of April so that we can do our software upgrade. All the other offices at City Hall will remain open for business. We will have some limited capacity, depending on whether we have to touch that software or not, because we won't be allowed to. So I will also say that most of the transactions can be done online through the city's website, whether it's a reregistration or a tax payment. We also have arranged with the town of Winslow for residents to register new vehicles only, which is the 20th, as Winslow's closed on Fridays. So people can go to Winslow on Thursday if they need to register a vehicle. So I wanted to clarify that. One other highlight that I'll announce is that we are making progress on the public safety answering point issue that we've been working on over the past two or three months. Chief Bonnie and I met today, and we do have a solution for this. It's actually going to go to the Finance Committee tomorrow afternoon at their meeting. And I'm happy to say that we can take on this task and not affect Waterville taxpayers. We'll be paying, Waterville will be paying the same amount as they, as they should for our regular dispatch center, but we'll be able to take this task on. So thanks to interim chief Bonnie and our dispatch supervisor, Sarah Bateese, for all their work on this. It's been a moving target and lots of things going back and forth, but I'm pleased that we're going to be able to do this. And that'll be discussed again next, tomorrow with the Finance Committee. Also, Web Road will be closed to through traffic. Actually started yesterday because of the work on the I-95 bridges. Expected to be reopened on May 25th, even though it was just reopened because of the culvert washout that was repaired by DOT. So any other questions or comments on the report that I could answer? Great, thanks.
Doesn't look like it. Great, thank you, Bill. Next, we'll go to council committees. Any reports? I do, I do want to just mention that the Housing Committee is changing our meeting time and place, so that we're now meeting in person. Our next meeting will be April 12th at four o'clock at the, in the Michael Roy Room at City Hall. And I believe we also will have an opportunity for Zoom as well, yes. So you can still Zoom in, but if, but the committee itself is going to meet in person. So looking forward to that. Any other council committees? Okay, I have one comment as well. I know many of you are disappointed that the Garbage to Gardens program pulled out of Waterville. And I did want to just highlight and remind everyone that we do have a free food waste program in Waterville that you don't have to pay for. Any citizen can take their food waste to I recycle on Drummond Road. Drummond?
Armory.
Armory. I always get them mixed up. Armory Road, right, near Caswells. And you can, you can dump your waste there. It gets food out of the landfill. You pay less for your purple bags. It's good for the environment. So please consider that and utilize that option. We're also looking at another service that would offer pickup. So stay tuned on that one, too. Okay. I guess we'll go to public comments now.
Sorry, I'm nervous. I'm Jody from Ward Seven. I'm here about affordable saving housing, and I am dealing with this personally with a family member who has been homeless for three months. I have gone to general assistance. I've gone to the shelter. I've gone everywhere for funding. I've spoken with mayor, he's not here tonight, who tells me there is funding and help to put her in a place. This is something we have to deal with now. It's everywhere. Our tax money is paying $3,000 a month to put her in the budget host. Let me say Barney would know this. There's drug addicts, there's bugs, there's domestic violence, and my, a three-year-old child is in this area, staying there. If we took that $3,000 a month and put her in an apartment, you could house two families at this point, too. I've done the math. I've reached out to the shelter. You know, everybody keeps telling me this funding, this help, general assistance. They don't help to better yourself or get this person. She needs a vehicle, she needs to work. I understand sometimes not the best choices. Again, helping with that foundation and fighting. I know you've heard it again. I think, you know, we need this taken care of. I mean, this, this can't keep going on. The system makes no sense to me at all. None. We have to cap these landlords off. When you go to look for an apartment, you're going to pay 12 to, 3,000 was the one I saw the highest. No one can afford this. You're fighting with hundreds of people to get into housing. That leads to the drugs, the despair, the domestic violence. You're going to need more than just one man doing this. You are going to need a team. We're on the tenants' association, and we will help you as much as possible, but we have to fight it together. If we don't help these families and these kids, your city ain't going to, you can build all the malls you want down here, all the retail. There's no paying jobs here to support what people have to pay to survive and live. Go by Hathaway and see people living in a tent, and don't say, just get a job. Some of them are working and cannot do it. It has to stop today. I don't know who else I can keep talking to, because the mayor doesn't know, and every one of you sitting here should know this. You go to the budget house, budget host, and see how many police officers I see there. There are children that have to live in this situation. You're talking about abuse and neglect? We need to give education and tools for these people to do better. Then it comes back twofold. Then the kids that we help will help us when we're in our wheelchairs or whatever it is. So that's where my little soapbox is tonight. I tried to keep it short. There's plenty there, but, and I am talking with the director at the shelter. I did reach out to her. Everybody wants to push the buck. If I ask general assistance, they don't know. Well, can you help with rent? If you're going to pay $3,000, you might as well be paying the rent. And you can house more people that way. I mean, I'm not an accountant, but this isn't rocket science. So, thank you.
Thank you for speaking up on this. I just want to say very quickly that one of the challenges is actually finding the apartments, right? Because people who have vouchers must find an affordable rental unit. It can't exceed fair market rate. And so, so that is a challenge.
We need to speak at the mic.
Yeah. I, so, I also want to, I see that Ash was getting up to speak, so I also want to hear from her, too.
That's a five to 10-year wait. I have gone through the channels. I have reached out to as many people as I can think of that the mayor keeps telling me. I wish he was here tonight, because I was ready. And I don't mind Jay, you know, we do this, but I've gone to his office, gone to his workplace. He tells me, yes, we have this money, we can help this person. Where, how? Explain it to me, because I've been in the office with these people. I've been to the shelter. I've been everywhere. And when you're telling me you've gone to the shelter, the mayor told me that, I checked. That did not happen. It did not happen. Don't lie to me. I know, you can't answer. I'd rather you tell me the truth and as much as it hurts, but don't.
The truth is that we've put into place as many different types of support as we can, from, everything from more general assistance to diversion for the housing, the homeless shelter, and master leasing funding for the housing, homeless shelter. You know, this is a very complex problem. I'm not passing the buck, but I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting about it, because I'm concerned about it, too. And, and it's something that every community is facing. It's not just Waterville.
I understand that, but it has to, it has to be, go ahead. I did. I've gone to three apartments.
Paula, if you want to speak, go up to the mic.
We, I went to three apartments. One, I wouldn't put a dead dog in it, and they still want $1,200 for. So that enforcement, we're trying to get in for code, and it can't be just walkthrough. You have to look at everything. I can look at everything and tell you what's wrong. So, and I, we saw some that were nice, but it's going to, it's, you know, it's 1375, but at least everything's included. But again, thousands are fighting for this. We don't need a park put down here on Front Street. Your $3,000 apartment that's down there, still vacant, isn't it? You have to do, there has to be now. When, when, I know you put it in place.
We are, we are trying, and I am happy to talk with you after, after the meeting or any other time. It is an important issue. Okay.
Art Fermnik, Ward Six, concerned as well. This housing is ridiculous. Who here from council has been in the shelter recently? I was there probably a week ago because I was helping somebody out. I wouldn't want my best relative or friend in that shelter. It's a drug den. Come on! Come on! These serious issues, and we're going to keep looking behind us, over our shoulder? The soup kitchen isn't any better, the drugs are over there. We have one guy, and I'm so thankful he's working with the police, but we need more. Like Jody said, we need a team. This stuff has to happen. We can't keep waiting next week, next month, next year. That's too late. It's got to happen.
Thank you. Patty, do we have anyone online?
We do. This is Nancy Sanford. I will promote her. Hi Nancy, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. I have a question and then a comment. When, after the consultants let us know what they think or present ideas in May regarding the revive, the next phase of the revitalization of downtown Waterville, what happens then? I guess, and my real question is, who decides what is going to get done and what doesn't get done? Or do we not know that yet? Or do we not know that yet?
Do you, do you wanna speak to that, Bill?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. So, it really, it really depends on what the results are from what the consultants put together, Nancy. So we really don't have an answer for that yet. We're still in the process, as you know. So we, we'll be better able to answer that question after we see the results that they have.
Okay. As you know, cuz I, I spoke with you and Rebecca about this last week, I was not happy that... And I'm thinking particularly about the Riverwalk, that, that the, that the possibilities or the renderings that were offered, every single one of them, there were three of them, and every single one of them took up the whole Riverwalk space, green space. And that's, you know, fine. Some people have, have gotten ideas. But another idea that I've heard at every single one of the visioning sessions, and I've been to all of them, was that we need to keep that open and green. So my concern is that, that that wasn't one of those possibilities where people could say, "Yes, no, whatever." And I'm a little concerned, no, I'm a lot concerned, that, that...
So...
That, that, that possibility is not being given as much weight as development.
Okay, so I, I just wanna speak to that because I, I talked to some of the consultants at, at the, at the last session who are quite aware that a lot of people have that feeling. And it, it certainly is a possibility. Nothing is finalized at all. And in fact, you know, the reason that you saw three different diagrams with development ideas on that, on that space is just to present the ideas. And, you know, one of the consultants said, "Oh, we should've left, you know, one blank." Because they're aware that people are, are concerned about that. So absolutely, that's a possibility. And thank you for speaking up. We'll pass that on. I mean, that's, you know, why we have these sessions. And so it was just, you know, so it was a lot of information to convey. But it's absolutely up for grabs at this point. According to, you know, diff, input that, that's been received. So don't worry.
All right.
It's not off the table, okay?
Good.
All right. Okay, Tom, I saw your hand up.
Well, you, I was gonna speak to the point Ms. Sanford made as well. You, you pretty much said it. I just wanted to make the point that these are simply plans. These are visions and they, they... Nothing in the plan is going to happen until the city decides to enact what parts of that plan we are feasible and which parts of that plan we wish to prioritize, which parts of that plan we have resources for. Yeah, it's just, it's just getting ideas on, on paper.
Hi there. My name's Ash Heber. I live in... Oh, no, I'm so sorry. I believe it were four. And just speaking of like the, I guess, resident involvement and decision-making, I was wondering, I was kinda mulling it over since the last meeting. And I was wondering, so, since the city is most likely going to be giving around 200 grand to the development of this building slash commercial complex, how much of a voice do you have and say the breakdown of truly affordable units in that building because you gave that much money over?
Go ahead, Tom.
The money that we spoke about in the last meeting, that 200,000, is federal dollars that is gonna come from the federal government. It's passing through us. We haven't, we, we... And all that money is used to drop the buildings. There was a gas station where the bakery is now. All that soiling stuff has gotta be hauled out. They gotta bring fresh stuff in. None of that money is gonna be used to put new structure up. All that's for is to mitigate the stuff that we don't want there. The chemicals, the dirty soil. Who knows, the Bobbin's been there forever. Who knows what's back there?
Absolutely, no, that's very helpful.
Okay, that's what all that money's for. We haven't even gotten into the part about putting a structure back up. All that money was for was to clean the property off.
Okay.
And we have no, we don't touch that money, other than it passes through us to go, it's part of the process. We make sure that they use the money the way they're supposed to use the money. That it's not used for something on the side. All that money has to go directly to that.
Okay, I really appreciate that clarification, sir. Thank you. I was wondering then what types of avenues you all might know about before I might contact the developers directly about maybe having a, a listening session or some type of meeting with tenants, like truly renters around the city who, like you probably heard earlier, are really having a hard time already, struggling with rent. I was wondering what types of avenues we could explore there, if you know of any.
Well, the, that, that particular developer will be presenting plans at the planning board. You know, that, that the development is, is a private-public partnership. And so, and there are a number of developments for housing in Waterville currently. Certainly, the Housing Committee has heard and discussed a lot about the need for housing at all levels, but particularly low-income housing. So certainly, the planning board is an opportunity for you to speak to the, to the developers' plans. But, you know, each project is a little different. And the more housing we get in Waterville, the more we'll have available. And, and things will shift around and we'll have, you know... We have a logjam right now. We need more housing at all levels.
Yeah, I hear you, absolutely. I think we definitely need the most housing where it's affordable and sustainably affordable. So thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone online? Oh, we have someone.
Oh, you, go ahead.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jacob LeVarne Way. I am here representing Strong Towns for Winslow and Waterville. Essentially, we try and push for building up communities instead of building out, both for fiscal and for development reasons. For like housing, more jobs, essentially, stuff like that. One of the things I wanted to ask about today was parking minimums. Because parking minimums are known to both devalue the land and, and decrease the amount of development that can occur on that land, which means less housing, less businesses, less places for people to work and earn money, you know? What? Has there been any consideration by the Waterville City Council about removing parking minimums and switching to, instead of enforcing parking onto people, allowing businesses to just add as little as they need?
Bill, do you wanna take that one?
Sure. I don't think the council has addressed that at this point. And I've only been here for a little bit over a year with the city. But that really is a planning board discussion. That's where the ordinances are, are created, as well as amendments are suggested to the council when it comes to that. I know that there's a comprehensive planning process that's underway currently. I have not personally been involved in that yet. But I, there may be discussions at that point. But I think it's something that I, me personally, think it needs to be looked at as part of that discussion. And there is a new law, of course, in Maine around housing for, that's, that's gonna force us to look at some issues around housing and, and parking that go along with that as well.
Do you know the name of the law off the top of your head, or should I try and find that out?
LD, LD 2003 that was enacted last year.
Thank you.
I believe there were some ideas for reducing parking as part of the downtown visioning plan as well, which will be interesting to look at. Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda, unless there's anyone else that wants to speak online? No, okay.
So the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Shall we dispense with this one first and then do the title-only? Is that okay? So there was a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Shall I take a roll call? Counsel Green?
Yeah.
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie? Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Is there a motion to read by title-only?
Yes.
Shall I do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie? Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to old business.
Ordinance 47-2023, amend the zoning ordinance, 74 Pleasant Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
So as the council knows, the planning board had voted 7-0 at their meeting on March 28 to recommend the zoning ordinance amendment for 74 Pleasant Street. Then it was referred back to the planning board by the council for the reasons, for them to clarify the reasons behind the recommended zoning change. As you probably remember, this affects the former church rectory building. It's now owned by Ware Butler. And I think Planner Anne Beveridge can provide more information if you need it.
Do you wanna speak to that, Anne? Okay. Are there any questions from the council about this? Counsel Frankie?
You turn your mic on. When we sent this back to the planning board, I had made some comments. And I'm going to make those comments again. This is a matter of a contract zone in a residential, in a residential zone. The, one of the key issues here is that residential zones do not permit commercial operations. There is, in the zoning, excuse me, in the zoning ordinance, a special exception for professional offices in a residential zone. And that's for doctors, lawyers, who have low-traffic operations as opposed to a commercial office. In addition, there's a special exception to the exception for professional offices in residential zones. And this, I should point out, is the only special exception in the entire zoning ordinance that refers to a specific street by name. That, this special exception says that professional offices are not even allowed on Pleasant Street, Gilman Street, Dalton Street, Pleasant Court, Sheldon Place, and Winter Street west, west of Pleasant Street. To be perfectly clear, the exception to the exception cars Pleasant Street out as a strictly residential zone. No offices, commercial or professional. The zoning ordinance goes on then to define the rules for a contract zone. And the key point here is the contract zone must be consistent with the existing and permitted uses in the rezoned district. Since the special exception prohibits offices of any kind on Pleasant Street, and because this is a residential zone that did not have a office as a prior use, that means that this is just simply not an acceptable contract zone. I oppose this and I hope the rest of the council will, will vote with me. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wanna speak to this?
I got a question. So if we do approve it and it does go into contract, like the contract, can it go back to residential after, if somebody, if they sell it or something like that happens?
Anne, would you speak to that? Could you, could you go to the mic though, please? Thank you.
That was one of the conditions that the planning board recommended the city council include in the contract. That if, if they sell the property or choose not to use it for offices any longer, it would revert to the residential de-zoning without the contract.
Hi there, I'm Alan Orcott from Ware Butler Building Supply. I'm the chief operating officer. And just a quick summary of what we're trying to achieve. So the, the Ware Butler Building Supply store was open in 1925. They're on North Street. And it, it predated the Catholic Church that was built in 1928. It, of course, predated comprehensive planning and such. And our owners, Chris and Jason Brochu, that are Maine guys, are building hopefully a pretty, pretty good Maine-based company to help, help all, all of, all of the building and homeowners in Maine have, have other choices from Maine-based products. Definitely are sensitive to some of the housing challenges that are here. Knowing that the rectory building, which was, I believe, built in the 1880s and at some point acquired by the, by the church, then converted into a rectory when the church was built in '28 or who knows when. It hasn't been lived in for, I think, over 10 years. The church was closed in 2006. So it's essentially a vacant building that came along with the acquisition of the overall property. And we're continuing to be, you know, receptive to ideas. We've got, had a few discussions going on about some ideas for the church. And we're gonna be, again, open and willing to listen to ideas from folks in the community in the city. At, at the same time, the, the old rectory building has some good potential and it can certainly be used for temporary offices for the same folks that I have in the other office. So our goal, and we agreed to a few key additions that the planning board made, which was to restrict the, the access to the driveway as emergency use only, to install some fencing and a sign. And then certainly, if we ever end up not using the rectory building for the seven or eight people that we, six people that we wanna move in there temporarily, or if somehow we changed ownership at some point, we agreed easily to the concept of that being returned and having it be sort of a temporary contract zoning adjustment. So feel like we reached a pretty good compromise and we're willing to, to work with that. So just wanted to state that piece and hopefully that helps. Appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. I, I feel like the, some of the, the conditions of the contract zone meet the concerns, particularly having the traffic... particularly having the traffic come from Middle Street rather than Pleasant. And, you know, the planning board did vote to allow office space on the other property. It's not directly on Pleasant, but it's certainly in the neighborhood, so. I'm, I'm voting in favor of this. I think it's a great solution, and I, I thank Ware Butler, Alan, and your colleagues for working with us to address the concerns that we have. Anyone else? Okay, Tom and, well, Tom and then.
Okay. I'm for this. I want, I want Ware Butler to bloom, supply materials to build houses, hopefully help create some jobs directly or indirectly. But I want everybody that keeps trying to come up with a reason why this stuff shouldn't be happening to look at the old Boys Club and what state of disrepair it is. And what's starting to look like another Boys Club on Pleasant Street because everybody keeps infighting with what to do with this church. And all it's going to turn into is another disrepaired Boys Club and another eyesore on the city and the community. And he still can't come up with a use for the new Boys Club. I mean, the old Boys Club. Because of what it needs for abatement. I mean, how many apartments could there have been put in that thing? But somebody in the writing, when they sold the building, as I understand it, and I may be wrong, you can't use the pole in the basement. That's why nobody wants nothing to do with that building back in the day. Now, nobody wants nothing to do with that building. And we can't even get the city to take it down.
Okay, Counsel Frankie?
Well, there's no question that the Boys, old Boys Club building is one that's a, a big problem. However, that's not the issue before us. The issue before us is, I think, very plain and simple. The zoning ordinance, which actually is a law that council is obliged to obey, says that offices are not allowed on Pleasant Street. The contract zone clause in the zoning ordinance does not negate that. This is simply an action that is not permitted by the zoning ordinance.
I got a question. Why was it not permitted back then when they did that clause, do you, do you know?
I was not here, but I suspect the fact that Pleasant Street was singled out for special treatment in the zoning ordinance was because there was concern at that time of, from the spread of commercial enterprises off of, from Main Street and Elm Street into the Pleasant Street neighborhood. I don't know that for certainly, certain, but the fact of the matter is that that's what the ordinance says. It's plain language.
I was here back in the nineties, and the reason that was changed is because the traffic, even back then, was very heavy on Pleasant Street. So the planning board and the city council were very concerned about the traffic volume on Pleasant Street and didn't want it to increase at that time. So that's part of the reason why the planning board is recommending that the council restrict the use of the driveway on Pleasant Street to try to help mitigate that a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I think functionally, we, we have the same situation we have now because we have people in the offices on the corner who are parking in the same parking lot. They're going to use the same road they're using now. And, and the benefit is preserving that building, which is a historic building. It's older than the church, and people have expressed concern about losing such properties. So it seems like a good compromise to me in this, in this particular case. Any other comments before we take a vote?
Claude?
Well, certainly, council is at fault for not providing a mechanism for reuse of old buildings. We promised to do that last year, and we've never gotten around to it. So I do want to apologize to the planning board that we've left them hanging out there to try to figure out solutions. Unfortunately, I don't think this is a solution. Let me ask Mr. Orcot, if we vote not to, for this contract, if we vote against this contract zone, what will you do with the extra five or six people that you have to house for offices?
Yes, so Counsel Frankie, we toured through our, our office building that we're using now. It's about, it's on the same property, of course. It's about eighty feet away, a hundred feet away from the rectory building. So right now, we're stacked two and three in some offices where it's really difficult to be efficient with that. And so at the end of the day, if I'm not able to get this approved, I'm going to have to find a more expensive alternative. And I don't really have a great answer at this point. So I'm hoping that, you know, we acquired the property last year. Again, it has been sitting there unused. We certainly have kept, you know, kept it heated over the winter. But I think it's going on eleven years unused. And it seems logical to, you know, put a little money into it and get it, get it back, back into a better shape and use it for, for our team to be more efficient. So I, I don't know the answer to your question. I would have to come up with another plan, I guess.
Well, let me make a suggestion to you. In the comprehensive plan, the one that we have not updated yet, there's a section that recommends where economic development should be encouraged in Waterville. We have an industrial zone out on Trachten Road. That's referred to specifically several times in the planning comprehensive plan. We have a, a commercial zone at the airport, on Airport Road. Again, that's referred to several times in the old comprehensive plan as a perfect site for development. We have First Park, which is a partnership with the other towns in the area that's been advertised for development. And of course, we have numerous vacant office buildings downtown, only three blocks away from where your operation. So it would seem to me that there are some choices that could be made if we attend, if we do not give you the contract zone. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Your company owns that building currently, correct?
Correct, yeah. We acquired, all three buildings were as part of the same parcel back in the spring of last year.
So if everyone votes no, what happens to that building? What is Ware Butler's plans for that building?
We, we don't have a use for it if we're not able to use it that way. So we don't have a clear plan. It's going to continue to be unused. And at some point, we'll have to figure out, obviously, the cost to carry it. And obviously, we're going to be paying taxes on, on that. So at some point, we'll have to consider what's logical. Hopefully, that answers your question. I don't know the answer. You know, we, when we acquired it, we weren't sure about that part. We were sure about the office space that we're using now. And to the point of Counsel Frankie's question, I think that would be a much more cost-prohibitive option for us. So in terms of Trachten Road or some of the other development opportunities. So for us to invest and do anything new would be, would be much, much more expensive. We've got a reasonably affordable plan to reuse the existing building that, that we acquired. So that seems like the most logical first, first choice, so.
Let me ask you one other question while you're up there. You have some offices in the weight building. You want to put some offices in the rectory. Where else do you have offices currently? Or is everybody in the weight building?
No, we have a, we have a handful of people that are up over the store, the old store office on North Street. That, that will continue. That's full to capacity. We have a few people in the one hundred Pleasant Street, right beside the fuel station there that's beside our property. And we have some people that work from home some, and we're, we're kind of, we're kind of scattered. So again, our, our goal is to continue to develop our position and, and make Waterville our, our headquarters of our corporation and continue to, you know, solidify our, our spot here in, in the city and try to keep growing the business. So to have folks scattered all around, it makes it a little bit, a little bit more difficult for our efficiencies and, and costs.
Well, that brings me to say that while it may seem like I'm being obstreperous here, I'm simply trying to follow the law. And I do appreciate the fact that you've decided to locate your headquarters here in Waterville. It just strikes me that having people scattered all over the place is not going to be a long-term solution for you anyway. So maybe this is time, the time for you to start thinking really seriously about consolidating all of your operations in one of these areas, for instance. Downtown would be a great place to put up the big Ware Butler sign and really advertise what a great company you got.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so.
I have, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one, one more thing. Because I'm very conflicted with this because I, I listen to a lot of the residents of Waterville and, and there's concerns where Ware Butler is removing homes from neighborhoods and the integrity of a, of a residential neighborhood being disrupted by this place, by, by this, by this extension of your business. What would you say to those individuals that are concerned with that? And, and to basically, you know, because there's, there's that concern that it's going to disrupt the integrity of a residential neighborhood and, and the like. So how would you respond to that?
Yeah, so that's been brought up. Appreciate the question. It's, it's, again, Ware Butler has been there selling building materials and hardware since nineteen twenty-five. So it was, it wasn't, I'm not really exactly sure how the neighborhood looked a hundred years ago, ninety-eight years ago. But point being that there were a couple of rental properties that were in difficult shape. And then there was a, a dilapidated property that we acquired that were, that was just rebutting our property. So again, rather than, we're not really in the rental landlord business. We're not developers either. So we, you know, we've made a decision that what, what we thought was the best decision to keep the existing footprint of the store, not trying to expand that. At this point, really what we're, we're trying to do is just utilize the property that we acquired. Again, we'd be, we'd be a willing partner with any discussions, committees, community folks that, that have come enough to enough of these now to know that there is some opportunities on housing that we've got to figure out. So if we can be part of the solutions on that, we would be receptive to that. So, yeah, I don't, I don't have the solution for a housing challenge, but we're essentially just trying to keep, keep the same footprint for the retail operation, but then be able to have the opportunity for our, our folks that are administration to, to run the company here in Waterville.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Let's move to a vote.
I got a question too. I mean, sorry to just, I, I don't think it's directly to him. But so are we going to continue spot zoning? Because this is what we're doing. And it's like, why can't we just figure it out? Like, where is residential and where is going to stay residential? Especially with the housing shortage. It kind of like, it feels like we always spot zoning, and we're taking away from residential to make it to commercial. Like, is this going to continue happening? Is my question.
Can I speak to that?
Counselor Klepak hasn't spoken yet, so.
Point, point well taken. However, we're talking about a rectory here. This was where, it's true, a priest lived. And where the, you know, the priest had his administrative offices for whatever he was doing there. But we're not, this, this was not a family home or something like that. And this entire parcel is certainly on the border of a commercial zone and a residential zone. The, the use of a building that has been there, we're not, they're not demolishing some building to have a, a bunch of commercial foot traffic. This, they're, they're, as I understand it, they're planning to use these, this building as administrative offices. There won't be customers, a flow of customers going into and out of this building. There are going to be people that come in the morning, use the, the building as offices, perhaps then go over to the main office of the Ware Butler, which is on the adjacent commercial property. I don't think that this is, while certainly spot zoning is an issue, particularly in how it disrupts, you know, the continuity of perhaps a resident, you know, for example, a residential zone. This is not actually a particularly, in my opinion, good example of the misuse of that, of the spot zone. Not, you know, Counsel Frankie's arguments about language notwithstanding. From just a practical perspective, I don't really see this as a problem, given the use that Ware Butler has proposed for this space. There are not going to be a flood of customer foot traffic into this building. There's going to be people in offices sitting at computers, I imagine, is what's going to be happening. Which seems like a fairly reasonable use for a building that has never had families living in it.
Okay.
And the thing, well, I think he clarified, there was people living there. That's the difference, not just as an office. And I, that's, I mean, that's the only thing like I'm really like, kind of like conflicted about. It's like, you know, there was people living there. So it was considered like residential.
Right. So I, I think I would agree with Counsel Klepak that this is an example, this is not like the most egregious example of spot zoning that we've seen for the reason that we're preserving a building that's going to keep the character of the neighborhood intact. Yes, we're, and, and there's no possibility right now for that to be housing because it's owned by a commercial company that doesn't want to be landlords, right? The thing that does concern me about the situation is having a, a business, purchase property in a residential zone and then request a change to the zoning. However, in this particular situation where we already have, had the planning board already approved a change to the office building adjacent to it, we have the opportunity to preserve this building. It's not going to affect traffic on Pleasant Street. It seems to me, and, and the company is working with us to try to come up with some housing solutions for the church. I, I personally don't see this as, as a, I, I see this as, as a good opportunity to try to preserve, preserve the building and, and have it be in use. Because, you know, the other option we have is to let it sit there or be demolished. So I do think we need to work on, on our, our plans for zoning and, and development in the future. The planning board made the point that this is a neighborhood in transition. And I think we need to think very carefully about how we want it to grow. But in this situation that we have before us now, we have to think about what is best for that, for that neighborhood right now and for our, our businesses. and for our businesses.
So, you think violating the law is the best solution for this neighborhood?
This is, no.
I disagree. This neighborhood was specifically been reserved and protected, and for us to take this kind of action is simply wrong.
Well, it was taken around the corner, so I don't see the difference. I'd like to move to a vote now. Counselor Gilli?
Were there any other public comments? We didn't ask whether there were public comments.
Oh, are there any public comments?
There's no one online.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Okay. Oh, one more. All right. Sorry, I haven't been following this. But, you know, just thinking outside the box, and I don't know, because you bought this as a complex with the church and the other building. So, it seems like this is attached to a parking lot, right? Does it back up into a parking lot? And it seems like the residents are based on the front door, and the front door is on Pleasant Street. Is there any possibility of changing the front door and using it so that it's not actually part of the Pleasant Street anymore and part of the complex with the parking lot? Just a thought, and I don't know what the laws are around that, but I'm just thinking of changing something so we're not actually breaking a law in that it's actually... Well, we're not breaking the law. We're introducing a contract zone, which we've done before. I'd like to, I'd like to let Alan respond to that, and then...
Sure. No, I just want to answer your question. So, our intention is really to use the side door that's on the side of the parking lot where the existing office is. I doubt we would really even use the front door that's on Pleasant Street. So, that's a good suggestion, but I think our practical use doesn't intend to use the front door.
Okay, thank you.
Now, it's my understanding that the entrance from Pleasant Street is going to be cut off, correct? So, and you were saying Middle Street was going to be the access?
There's emergency access only off Pleasant Street.
On Pleasant, okay. And like he had just mentioned, there is a side door. I know this property well. My parents married in that church. I walk through there practically daily now that the warmer weather is coming. I'd much rather see this building used. It's Ware Butler's property, isn't it? Yes, it's zoned, whatever. But, I tell you, Ware Butler's been here a long time. I don't think they're going anywhere unless Waterville is really stupid. Waterville, let's not be stupid. Let's reuse the building.
All right. On that note, let's take a vote. Counselor Gilli?
I spoke with Counselor Frankie earlier, and I appreciate his guidance. It's been a compelling argument this evening in regards to this building. And I appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions. As, having said that, I will be voting yes for this.
Counselor DeBrito?
Um, no.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
No.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and two opposed.
Okay, moving on to new business.
Resolution 66-2023 authorized the issuance of a marijuana retail store license to Wildfire LLC.
Move to the app. All right. Any questions, comments about this item? Okay, anyone?
Do we have anybody from the company to explain what they're up to?
Great. Can you come to the podium, please?
Hello, I'm Tony Green. I'm one of the owners of Wildfire.
I'm Jesse. I'm one of the other owners.
So, this new store is going to be at Fort Sangarav. So, this building, I don't know if anyone knows the history. It is built in 1900. It's very old. It was a train depot. So, we've been restoring it and making it look really nice for the customers of Waterville.
Are you moving from College Ave?
Yes.
That location has been shut down and we're relocating to Sangarav.
Yeah, we did something bigger.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, okay.
So, are you just doing retail? Or you, it says cultivation in here. Is that, you're expanding your operation?
So, it's a big building. There's a lot of units. That location for us will just be retail. Our cultivation is on Industrial Street.
Yeah, we do have plans to do manufacturing in that building too, but we had a zoning issue with that, which is going to be brought up in the next council meeting, I believe.
Yes, so that unit that we're proposing this for is just retail.
Yes.
All right. And this is in the commercial C-zone?
Yes.
They're just reoccupying the old, are you ready to party?
Yes.
Exactly, yes.
Make it easy for everybody. Are you ready to party? That's where they're going.
Yeah, it's a really cool property. Like she said, it's an old train depot from like 1899 or 1900, all post and beam. So, we sort of gutted the inside, and we're renovating that, and it's looking really nice. So, we're excited.
It needed a lot of love, but we're giving it to it. Ware Butler has been nice to supply all the stuff.
Excuse me, but I think this is probably an issue I have with the administration because in my agenda, it says issuance of a marijuana manufacturing license. This is, since we've started doing our new system, I'm having trouble trying to figure out some of what the resolutions. We don't have resolution numbers anymore. We just have brief comments. I don't recall seeing anything in particular in the city manager's comments about this either.
It's all right here, sir. 6623 is all the things that you need, right here.
It says authorize the issuance of a marijuana retail store license. So, you may not have...
So, I've just got something, I've just got misinformation here? Is that...
I don't know if you have a draft agenda, maybe?
Here's the draft agenda. It says draft on it, yeah. Looking at the one.
I did just want to clarify. On the agenda, it said Wildfire LLC was the entity applying. It's actually Wildfire Retail LLC, if that matters.
Okay.
Okay, so this really is an issue that I have with the administration. If you're not getting me correct information, then it's hard for me to make decisions, correct decisions about stuff.
I believe you're clicking on the earlier link for the agenda, because we do post a...
I'm an old guy. If you give me too many things to click on, I don't get the right information. So, get it straightened out.
So, I think, you know, yeah, we can help you with that, Claude. I think that, you know, the link, the information's being provided. It's just a matter of accessing it, so.
You can't just smile your way past this one, Counselor Green. This is important for me to have the correct information.
We all get the same emails, Counselor. We all get them. So, you got that draft, we get the same one.
I'm just saying, it's not, it's not the fault of the administration.
Right. So, let's not blame the administration.
It is important for you to have the information, so.
You have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we move to a vote?
Should we amend to add the retail in there?
I would propose an amendment to add, to clarify that's Wildfire Retail LLC. So, we're adding the word retail.
Right. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Can we vote on the amendment?
Yes, please. Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Can we move it as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Lady's got a question.
Okay, you need to go to the podium, please. But, okay.
We fixed the word.
My name is Brenda Whitney. And one of the very first things that we were discussing here is the problem with drugs and alcoholism in this community. And now, we're encouraging more of this that is the problem that everybody is seeing. And I did not vote to make it. You know, just allow it. I just, I'm sorry. I think that we're, that we're not addressing the problem. We're just kind of letting it go.
Well, marijuana is legal in Maine, as is alcohol. And so, this is, this is a legal, legal right to operate this business. And, you know, that's another question. But, we need to, we need to vote on this tonight. And, you know, you're addressing a larger problem, I think, that we can't solve on the council. So, let's move to a vote, please. Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
No.
Counselor McCormick?
No.
The vote is five in favor and zero opposed.
Two opposed, please.
I'm sorry, two opposed. Thank you.
That was, that was the amended version.
Yeah, it was the amended version.
We passed the amendment. We moved it as amended. We voted on it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Onto Resolution 67-2023, appointment of members to the Community Resilience Committee. Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Do we have anyone here that's been appointed? No, we don't, I don't think. Okay. Any comments before we take a vote?
Yeah, I'll just say that we did receive six applications from residents, and there are five positions on the committee as approved by the council previously in the committee creation of this committee, and then two counselors as well. So, you have the recommendations from the mayor for these appointments in your resolution.
All right. And the two counselors are Counselor Klepak and Counselor Frankie, I believe.
Yes.
Can you just, Bill, can you just give a quick, like, what's the charge of this committee? Just to refresh.
This is the committee that was created as a result of us joining the Community Resilience Partnership through the Governor's Office of Innovation. Something in the future. I can never remember the full title of it. But, basically, this committee will be looking at projects that we can do, undertake in the city to help with climate change. So, whether that's solar panels or electric vehicle charging stations or electric vehicles or whatnot, that's what their charge is going to be.
Basically, Mike, Waterville's going to carry the load for the entire world. You can count on us.
Okay. Load of what, I don't know, but we'll figure it out.
Okay. Shall we move to a vote? Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yeah.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Resolution 68-2023, approve bid award to Mainly Paving Services LLC for local paving, 2023. Move to adopt.
Second.
I would just turn this over to Public Works Director Matt Skane, as well as our Assistant Engineer, John Lombardi.
Yeah, right. Thank you. Hello, everyone. So, just a bit of background before we get into the actual bid itself. Of course, you should recall that we hired Wright Pierce last year to help us survey and assess all of our roads, including sidewalks. They're just wrapping up now. They put together a five-year plan for us, which is something that we had asked for, but we had to make adjustments because we based the five-year plan on $1 million annually for paving. So, like Bill said before, John's here, and he can get into more of the details as far as what the five-year plan would look like. Not tonight, but we do have a listing of roads that are in need of repair sooner than later, ahead of other streets. It's kind of a complicated program because we want to find streets that are relatively close to one another because that way, the contractor doesn't have to mobilize and remobilize. And we also work very closely with the utilities. Of course, when we redo our streets, sewer and water often want to get in to replace their infrastructure as well because they're in the same boat as we are. We're behind. So, I've got, I know we've got a lot of priorities, but from my perspective, we really need to start thinking about prioritizing a budget for paving. We typically, over the last 15 or 20 years, we have had between $250,000 and $350,000 per year in this market, and then these, with contractors and with the, well, prices of materials, it just doesn't go very far. Just something food for thought. So, based on current materials and labor, a shim and overlay, which is a program for reconstructing a road, not reconstructing it, but for repair. It's a medium level. So, a shim and overlay for one mile of road, 20 feet wide, which is typical, is roughly $250,000. So, a full reconstruction, which is when a road is completely gone, you know, the base, the sub-base, of course, the pavement is shattered. A full reconstruct, one mile, 20 feet wide, is $2.5 million. That's one mile of road. These numbers are really hard to make a den if we're only budgeting $250,000 to $350,000 a year. So, my recommendation would be that we budget a half a million to a million dollars a year so that we're not fighting this every year and chasing certain streets. Of course, of course, we know what streets are bad. We see them too. And some of the streets that are on the list for approval tonight are in better shape than some of the streets that I'm sure that we know about. But, because of the condition of those other streets, we're not able to, we're not able to fund improvements to those until we bond to fund improvements to those until we bond, or until we, you know, take a look at the capital program. So it has to, I believe it has to come through that mechanism, capital budget, or bonding every year or every other year for us to, to get ahead of the curve. So, yeah, I guess John Lombardi is here, he's our Assistant Engineer, he's been working very closely with Wright Pierce, he's been with the city for a long time, he lives in Waterville. So I think if there are any questions generally between the two of us, we should be able to answer them for you. But as far as this year's, you know, this, the actual resolution, we're looking at shim, mill, mill and overlay for Glenn, Grous, Lloyd, and Merrill, as well as a reclaim of Morrison Avenue. Mainly paving came in well under the other three bidders. We had four total bid on the project. So, any questions?
Can I just add, too, that the funding for this is coming from the bond from, from last year? So that's where the funding is.
Okay, it did say the bond from '21.
Yeah, there's a terminology difference. So originally, it was going to be sold in '21, but because of delays with deciding on the projects, I believe, it was sold in '22. So it really is a '21 slash '22 bond.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Frankie, and then Counselor Klepak.
So I have two questions. Number one, the streets that you did last year, could you give an example of one that was a complete rebuild and one that was just a shim overlay?
Yeah, so Veterans, we did Veteran last year, that was a full reconstruct. And then, as far as overlay, we did a couple on Reddington, that was an overlay.
And how much do we have left to, in, from the bond?
That's, yeah, that's all of it. I'm sorry, Bill. Yeah, roughly $425,000.
I mean, that's what we're spending, that's what we're going to spend right now.
We're using all of it. So that's why we based, you know, with the data from Wright Pierce, the street selected and the budget, right? That's what we have left.
Counsel, go ahead.
I was gonna commend them for the work they did last year. Public Works spent a lot of time down in the south in, in Ward 7 last year. They completely reconstructed Veterans Court, Cary Lane, half of King Street. They did an overlay on the other half of it, but they, they were down there every day last summer. They had water, public work, the Water District was in there tearing things apart. Sewer District found stuff that they didn't realize they had, they ran into work they didn't expect, but they came through in flying colors. And I respect what they did for my community last year, and I thank them again.
Okay, great. Counselor Klepak.
Hey, Matt, John, I echo Tom, thank you for all your hard work. Just to, to help me understand the scope of the problem, help us all understand the scope of the problem, how many miles of road would you estimate in Waterville? Maybe you don't have this number, but how many miles, if you, if you could estimate, are in critical condition and need some sort of complete reconstruction currently?
Yeah, we don't have that number right now, Counselor, but the data that we have in the report, we can pull those numbers and report back.
Yeah, even, even, just in order of magnitude on that, are we talking tens of miles, are we, you know, 50 miles, 100 mi, like, you know, just a rough, so we can get a sense of what the problem actually is. I 100% believe you, we all recognize that it's a problem across the city, but just to be able to get a, a scale of the problem so we can understand how, the, the kind of resources are gonna need to be, the time scale of the resources that are gonna need to be invested in this issue.
Right, we're happy to pull that.
Well, I can give you a guess, Tom. If we repair a mile a year, we're talking about a century.
So, to Tom's point, will we have a chance to see the report from Wright Pierce, or have a summary? That, that would help, I think, for us all to-
Absolutely, absolutely.
-to know what we're looking at.
The report's pretty technical, but John's gonna break it down, so we'll be able to share. I think, you know, we'll meet with the city manager and find out just exactly what you're looking for, and kind of give you the, the bolts of it.
Okay, thank you. As you know, lots of folks in my ward have concerns, and rightly so. Some of our, our roads are pretty beat up.
Counselor, I would just want to add, too, that once we have this report, and it is a very technical, I've, I've seen the database and I've seen the information. So the goal is to extract information out of that, and, and to put it into the, into the capital improvement plan as we continue to build that, so then we can actually budget appropriately as we move forward. This is one of the things that I've been struggling with over the last couple of months while I'm looking at the budget, is how much money to put in the budget for paving. You may be, the Finance Committee will be talking about capital tomorrow, they may be shocked at the number that I put in there for paving, but it, it needs to be mentioned and brought up, and then we decide how, what we can afford. I mean, that's basically what, what the problem is. I, I've seen this in my other, in my other positions in other municipalities in the state, you, you get behind. It's very, very difficult to get caught up without, I mean, we have to bond, there's little question about that when it comes to paving, in order to, to jump ahead, or even, not even to jump ahead in this case, but to, to get somewhere close to being where we should be. So, you know, that's, that's where we are. We recognize it's a, it's a critical need, but we also recognize that, you know, taxes are always an issue, and we don't want to, you know, increase the tax rate substantially, which would be, would be significant if we were to do that. And keep in mind, too, that there's only so much work that can be done within a construction season. So we have to balance that as well, and that's one of the conversations that, that Director Skane and I have had, is how much work can be done legitimately by Public Works in conjunction with the contractors to come in, as well as the Water District, you know, and, and the other utilities that are, that are involved in projects. So we're, we are looking at that whole comprehensive list, but once we have all the data and, and can be able to sit down and review it all and put it into actually readable information for the council, we'll present that and then have a discussion around that as well.
Great, thank you.
Do we have a timetable for that, please?
I'd say sometime this summer, for sure. I mean, do you want more specific than that, Counselor? I mean, within, within the next, within the next month or two, I mean, probably before summer, yeah. It's, it's available, we just need to break it down.
Okay. I guess we'll move to a vote, unless there's anything else.
Could I ask one other question? I'm sorry, and then we can move it to a vote. What, what is it about mainly paving that allowed them to come in at roughly half a million dollars under Hopkins and $120,000 underneath the, the other two? Are, is, is there a quality, is there a standard, the same, is there some, I don't really, maybe John, who's the engineer, would, would know that? Is there any substantive difference between them? Yeah, I've looked over all their numbers, and they look accurate. A lot of it falls on liquid asphalt prices, mobilization costs, and quite frankly, just how they bid that. I have worked with some of the guys that, that work over there for different companies, they've moved, and they are reputable, they do great work, so I don't see any issue with their contract or their price. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move to a vote.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Resolution 69-2023, Approve Bid Award to Pine Tree Waste Services Waterville for Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Services. Move to adopt.
Second.
So I will also turn this over to Matt for discussion.
Right, so when we considered our options, which there are only just a few to consider, Pine Tree Waste was, is the best economically and environmentally. I know that my action request is loaded with numbers, but it's a, trash and recycling, there are a lot of moving parts, I hope you can appreciate. We put quite a bit of time, you know, fair amount of time and effort into talking to both Pine Tree and Waste Management to understand what things look like and what, what the best deal would be. We considered a one-year contract and a two-year contract. But the big take, the big takeaways from Pine Tree are that they're so local, you know, they're a subsidiary, a subsidiary of Casella, they're right on the airport road, whereas Waste Management, of course, is in Norwich Walk, so that's about roughly an hour and a half a day, on a good day, of transportation. So it's the time, it's the wear and tear, it's the fuel. And the other big takeaway would be, on the recycling side, Pine Tree offered an ACR rebate, which, if you're, if you, if you're watching things like that, the, the recycling market has gone way down over the last eight or 10 months, but we, you know, if, if we're being optimistic, you know, we, we're hoping that it comes back up, so we do have that opportunity. There was no opportunity for any ACR, ACR rebates with the Waste Management Plan in EcoMaine. Yeah, if you have questions, if, or if I didn't explain something clearly enough, please ask.
Yeah, Matt, could you just elaborate on the ACR element? As I understand it, that's, that's a rebate for the market value of the recycling?
Right, it's what they're worth in the market when they go to sale. So our recycling will be brought to Casella's site in Lewiston, where it will be sorted by a machine, baled, and then sold on the market. Each month, there's a ACR report, and I don't know, maybe Counselor, or City Manager Post knows where that report comes from. I don't know whether if it's, it's a federal report, as far as who determines what the ACR is. Don't know. Okay, I don't know where that, that, that report is, or that number is generated, but I think I listed in 2022, the average ACR per ton was $53, in, in 2021, it was $91. So if we're paying roughly $200 a ton for recycling, and it was 50, the ACR was 50, we'd be paying roughly $150 for the recycling. There really isn't, to be honest, much comparison between the two proposals. It's, it's clearly Pine Tree Waste has the best proposal for us.
Yeah.
And I personally like the two-year, just because of the fluctuation, and I'm afraid that if we, if we didn't, you know, our rates could be higher than, than this next year, although they are predicted to be higher in the contract, they could be much higher. I think it's a safe bet for us.
Counselor Frankie?
Just in terms of the mechanics, the, is I, am I correct, that we'll just be taking the trash to the transfer station, and we don't have to haul it all over the place now?
That's correct. Yep, they'll, they have one area where, where we'll dump the recycling, and then right around the corner, we'll dump the trash.
Okay, so, so the truck just needs to go out there after it runs down the streets, and then we're done for the day?
Correct.
Good.
Just wanted to clarify a couple of points, too. I think that's a valid point to remember, is that instead of driving the truck to Norwich Walk and back, we're just going to the airport road and, and dumping the trash. It saves us money in the long run, it also frees up that staff to be able to take on other tasks as well, which I think is important, but the fuel costs, the wear and tear on the trucks, it all adds up over time, that we don't see that money directly in our pockets, per se. But the other point that I wanted to make as well is that the city's hauling trash to Norwich Walk, and then it's buried in a landfill. When it goes to Casella Pine Tree Waste here in the city, they then truck it to Perk, which is the Panopson Energy Recovery Company in Oorington, where it is then burned essentially to, to make energy, which is obviously a better choice environmentally than burying the trash in a landfill. I'll say that we're, we're recommending the two-year contract because there, there, we were, over the last year, looking at a potential option, another option of the new plant in Hamden reopening under the Municipal Review Committee, which is a conglomerate of municipal towns that now own the, the plant that opened short, for a short period of time, a few years ago. They're trying to reopen that plant, but they have to find the financial backing to do that. It's, we thought that, that they may reopen in the next year or so, that plan has since fallen through, so we think that having the two-year contract will hopefully allow us to have another, another option, and maybe a better option down the road in a couple of years when it comes to disposing of the trash and the recycling. And then that can lock the prices in for us, too, so that we're not having a huge spike next year when we're looking at this. And hopefully, the, the recycling revenue increases over time, and then we are paying less for recycling disposal.
Okay, sounds like a win-win.
Quick question. So with this move to now bringing stuff out to the airport road, what are the, what's the truck on the road for? Like, how long is the truck on the road for on a daily basis? Like, on, you know, for like one, like a given day, any given day?
Yeah, the routes vary, but they're typically done with their routes around 1:30 or 2 o'clock.
And it starts at 7?
Seven.
7 to 1?
Roughly.
Now, that's currently going to Norwich Walk?
Correct.
So what, is it gonna be a little bit sooner now that they don't have to go to Norwich Walk?
It should be, right.
So like 7 to 8?
Well, it will be, yeah. There's no, there's no question. It will, they'll be back sooner.
So do we have an opportunity for, play a game? You want to know what's coming out of my mouth next?
I was hoping it wouldn't.
Yeah?
No, the four-day.
Yeah?
Yeah, so, I mean, this is first. The next, the, the second dual packer, which we should have this month, is second, and then we're, we're already-
Just, I'm thinking, another day that these trucks don't have to run-
Right.
-is probably a win also. We talk about, you know, maintenance and wear and tear and things like that. If we're not running for a full day, then this might be an opportunity.
It's, it's much more of a possibility now than it ever was, especially that we're dumping, dumping so locally. But my caution would be, what happens in two years when we're, we have to haul to Hamden, or we have to, I don't know, maybe we have to go back to Norwich Walk or haul to Portland, I don't, I don't know.
Well, it's where it's two years down the road, like, where we're at now, like, let's, if we can find other things for these people to do, we have other priorities in the city if these people can be utilized for a full day without having to run a truck for six hours, then that's probably, you know, worth looking at, and, you know, we've got a ebb and flow.
Any other questions before we move to a vote? Okay?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Resolution 70-2023, Refer to the Planning Board Zoning Amendment, Veterinary Clinics in Commercial A Zone. Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, would you like to speak to this?
Good evening, I'll try to make it short. I'm a city counselor, actually, in Fairfield, Matt Townsend. So I have to sit through these meetings as well, and so I really appreciate everything you're doing. It's kind of nice to be on this side instead of that side. Actually, I'm doing this. A little bit about myself, I've been a veterinarian here in the Waterville area for about 25 years now, serving this community, and I sold a practice in Fairfield a few years ago, and have the opportunity to come back to this area and do it over again, and try to do it better this time. There's definitely a need in the area, and both for our community, and the community, and the surrounding communities. At this moment, trying to move into a commercial A-zone actually would be in the old location of the old Sweet Frog in Waterville Commons. So actually, and while things have changed over the last 25 years, and actually longer, but since I've been in practice, we're veterinary practices, we're single standalone buildings in the middle of a large area. Now we're seeing this utilization of a storefront, very common, and it gets care to where people are, and where they are congregating, and what makes it more convenient for them. So I think that's what we're really looking at. At the moment, Commercial A is, excludes veterinarians for that, that use. We're looking at trying to change that. Obviously, I'm at your, at your, you know, at the whim of your, your decisions, but I think it's a good use in this case, and I can speak to some of the, you know, things that can help make this good for you, and for, good for this community in way of, you know, if there are concerns about noise, odor, traffic flow, those kind of things. So I'm all yours.
Counselor Frankie?
I have a question for the city planner. Could you explain why veterinarian clinics were excluded from the A-zone originally?
I have no idea. No, it's just the way we used to do things.
Is it because they expected veterinary clinics to be large and smelly, is that-
Well, I, I don't know if they were large and smelly, but they just didn't happen to be in the Commercial A-zone. I think when we created the zoning in 1971, we had zoning before then, but we had new zoning ordinance in 1971. So I'm, I'm thinking it was just based on where the existing offices were, there weren't any downtown, so we didn't add them. I wasn't here that long ago.
I just want to note that this particular, this Commercial A-zone is in the midst of a Commercial C-zone. So it was contract-zoned at one point, I guess, or changed, to allow for Commercial A, and that had to do with setbacks, as I understand it. So it's actually really in a Commercial C-zone. It's, it's in a Commercial A-zone that's in a, an island in a sea of Commercial C.
So wouldn't it be easier just to undo the contract zone?
Well, the planner, Ann can speak to that, but go ahead.
I would answer your question, too. You're exactly right. Old practices, again, smelly, whatever, there was, there were usually mixed animal practices, I was part of one. You had plenty, you know, livestock being hauled in, you had boarding, animals being boarded, that's not, in my case, we're not boarding, so those are the kind of concerns, that's-
So those are the kind of concerns, that's why those were eliminated. No, you're exactly right.
Can you... Yeah. Can you speak to that?
When most of that shopping center, the Waterville Common Shopping Center, was developed, the commercial C-zone worked for that, for those buildings, because they're all on very large lots. If you think of the Walmart and the Staples, for example. But that little strip mall was developed later, and it didn't have a large enough lot to meet the commercial C setback requirements. So they asked for commercial A zoning in order to be able to go in there without meeting the setback requirement. So if you were to rezone that property to commercial C, then you'd make the building legal non-conforming. I don't know what kind of legal problems that would cause for them, but...
But it sounds to me like the underlying problem is our setback requirements and our parking requirements, which are 1970 versions, and this is not 1970. Maybe we need to think about updating a whole bunch of our zoning ordinance just to avoid Counsel Frankie going off on a tangent every now and then.
Okay. We'll get to our priorities for counsel in just a moment. Anything else on this item? Okay?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel De Brito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Resolution 71-2023, adoption of the city council goals for fiscal year 2024, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2024. That should be 2025. Right?
Second.
So this list of goals was a direct result of the workshop that the council held in February on a Saturday, where a very good discussion happened over a six or seven-hour time period. And with that, I think I'll just turn it over to the council for discussion. I think this is maybe one of the first times these have been in front of the council for actual adoption, instead of just discussion. I think that's a good thing, because it puts it out in the public eye. It also holds city staff accountable to making sure that these goals are worked on and moved forward. I do want to say one thing about the first goal that's listed, which is to implement planning. And one of those phrases is adopt a realistic comprehensive plan that provides zoning reform, which is certainly something that we've talked about a little bit tonight and over the last, I don't know, seems like 58 meetings. So with that, I'll just turn it over to the council.
Okay. I think it's important that we just kind of outline what the goals are. So if it's helpful, I mean, I can give the headlines or I can read them, but they are available on the website. The top priorities that we came to as a result of quite a lot of discussion, looking at strengths and weaknesses of the city and opportunities and threats, which is a common kind of planning framework, we ended up with three top priorities. The first one is implement planning. The second is improve city staffing. And the third is address housing concerns. So under planning, we have consider data and outputs of existing plans, of which we have many, including the downtown visioning, the comprehensive plan, we have a police report we're waiting on, airport master plan, et cetera. And adopt a realistic comprehensive plan that provides zoning reform and other guidance for government, predictability for businesses, and increases quality of life for residents. Deploy professional resources for facilitation and zoning expertise. The output should be a set of actionable steps that covers a range of topics, including DEIA, diversity, equity, inclusion, and access, accessibility, and provide resources for implementation. So that's number one. Number two is improve city staffing. Better support staff through pay increases and other means. Adjust operations to improve efficiency, create infill positions, improve IT effectiveness, including a more user-friendly website. And the third top priority is increase housing availability by collecting and analyzing data about the current stock and current needs. Make a housing development plan that meets the needs. Support homeowners to improve their homes. Better collaborate with the Waterville Housing Authority and other housing partners. Create a land bank and housing repair fund. And consider establishing a new city government position focused on housing. So my suggestion is that we make housing number one, and that we... You know, this is the result of voting that we did. But I do think that I want to propose to counsel that we make... Put housing in the top spot, since it has consumed a lot of our discussion. Our citizens are very concerned with it. It is a need that really impacts every area of our city. And I'm... We do have some other priorities that we also identified, including improving public transportation, increasing resilience, improving infrastructure, promoting and marketing Waterville, establishing a community center and city council chambers, and improving our partnerships. So that's a long list, and it is good to have priorities. I would, at this point, invite other councillors to make any comments, and we'll certainly hear from the public as well. Counsel Frankie.
Well, in answer to your question why housing is not number one, because having a plan is what's, I think, really important for everything that the city does. And the number one item on the plan, of course, should be housing. There's no question about that. It's a problem that the entire country has to fix, but there's absolutely no reason why Waterville shouldn't go about expanding its resources to make it happen, make as much happen in this town as we possibly can. That's a... We have some projects going, but they're... One of the problems with big projects is they take a long time. So I'm hoping that the housing committee is going to come up with a plan for some smaller actions that can happen quicker, so we can get some of the vacant housing back into being occupied, so that we can really try to find a way to get the homeless people back into homes, make a real dent. So anyway, it's... The plan's first, but housing is the first thing on the plan.
So I would say that it's... The point of the planning is that this is beyond what the housing committee has the capacity to do, and that's why we need some professional support for a housing plan. I would... Stick to my amendment or motion that we move housing into the first place. Because I do think that's more important than the planning. Flavia.
Okay. So my question is, I think it's going back to your point, is what can we do now? Like, what is it in housing? Because converting a home is going to take time. Waiting for all these houses to come up is going to take time. So what can the city and what does the public want the city to do now? Because what I'm hearing is that they want something to be done right now. So can we even do that? Like, what is it?
And that's what I'm asking. It's passing the buck again. I'm asking, we employ all of you on this board. I know it's not an easy job. We can't keep waiting for committees to vote. We can't keep saying, oh, my God, we're going to offend somebody. It needs to be done now. You have to do something.
What do you want us to do? What would you like?
Why do you think you shouldn't rent a cap? Because you can afford it?
Okay, so I'm going to ask that we keep this orderly.
Okay.
So if you want to speak, you need to go to the podium. Jody, you're at the podium right now. You've asked what we can do right now. And there is a list of things that we can do.
So why can't you cap a landlord?
Why can't we what?
Hold them accountable and cap them.
So any properties that are in... We have a property ordinance, we have an inspection program, we are working on that front. We have other things we can do.
And that's taken how many years? Paula, you've worked on that for about eight years? Again, it's time is the essence.
Yes, it's true. Okay, so...
So that's why I'm asking guidance from you or education from you guys, that where is the funding? Where is the help? Where do you get it from?
But I got a question for you. So capping a rent, what would that do?
Okay, if you can... If you want to do math and break it down, say the rent's $1,500, $1,800. To survive, you would have to probably make $30 an hour. You tell me how many jobs in this city pay that kind of money? Is there? I mean, if there is, please let me know where I can send all these people to go work.
So it's starting to sound like it's an issue of lack of income in order...
Income and affordability. The landlords have been allowed to do this. I'm sorry. Even my apartment building's doing the same thing.
Okay. So I appreciate your comments, unless you have... I mean, I hear what you're saying, that that is one piece of what we can do. We can hold property owners accountable for maintaining their properties according to code. Absolutely. And we are doing that.
Thank you.
But I think I'm hearing something else here. I'm hearing that Waterville does not have jobs to help people sustain a living. And it seems like there is a gap. And if you can't have the job to actually pay rent, then you are going to be forced out. So how do we fill that gap?
Okay. Counsel Gilly.
Well, I mean, obviously, we all wish we could just snap our fingers and make, you know, housing affordable. But the thing is, with a house, we can't... I mean, we can't tell landlords what to charge. I mean, can we? And furthermore, if we did that, don't you think that they would say, hey, if you're going to do this, then I'm just going to sell my building and move out of Waterville?
Good luck. You're right. There is... There should be an agreement to come to.
A compromise, I agree.
100%. 100%. A lot of these buildings aren't up to code. They've been owned long enough. Don't tell me cost, you know, fair market value. Even the houses are outrageous here. They are. You want to charge $3,000 to live on Front Street? I mean, come on. You know what I mean? I'm not saying you two.
No, I totally understand where you're coming from.
That's where I'm trying... I'm frustrated as much as you are. And I know people that are homeless that need a place now. We can't keep waiting and keep waiting. If you're going to spend $3,000, our tax money, which is, hey, help anybody. You might as well put them in an apartment and pay that. You can house two people. I said this earlier. Two people you can house for what you're paying for that dump on KMD.
Okay, so what we need is we need landlords to come forward and work with the homeless shelter to do master leasing, so that we can get more people into apartments at an affordable and sustainable basis.
So how long does that process take? How long does that process take?
I don't have the answer to that.
We don't own the apartments. We don't own the apartments. We can't... We don't own apartments. So we can't put people... We can give funding to have people put in the budget. That's what we have.
So how do you do the funding to get... All right?
Bring us the apartments that we can put people in.
I saw an apartment the other day. So when I go to your general assistants and say, okay, we found a place, are you going to help with the rent? We don't know. Maybe there might be housing. There might be money. Who... I want an answer from somebody.
Okay. So, Jody, I hear you. We all hear you. And what we're talking about right now is whether... Is about our priorities. And I think we agree that housing's a priority. Well, we're putting it... We're putting it on our top of our list. Well, I hope we will. I hope we will put it on the top of our list, because it's important.
Yeah, and I think...
And we will come up with solutions, but it is not... It's not a magic wand. It's not a silver bullet. It's complicated.
I mean, the causes of homelessness and, you know, low-income disparity in terms of housing are certainly have local causes, but there are also obviously regional causes and national forces at play in this. And, you know, a local entity like the Waterville Municipality can do what is within its power, but it's... I mean, it's not passing the buck to say that it is not entirely a problem that is completely within the power of Waterville to entirely solve like that in an immediate manner. I understand that it's a crisis. It's extremely worrisome and troubling to everyone on the committee. Nobody on the council wants people to not live a dignified life with housing and income and food and respect and the resources that they need to be part of a flourishing community. Everybody wants that. But you... And we are committed to doing everything in our power. It is going to take advocacy, not just on the local level. It requires advocacy at the regional, at the state, and at the federal level, try to address some of these issues. There are just deep-rooted societal problems that are intertwined in the issue that does have dimensions that we can address locally here. And I think the community needs to understand that it can only happen through committed partnership, where we're trying to be understanding of one another and work as a team to try to address this issue. I do not like the thought that it's... The problem is being portrayed as due to a lack of concern or inaction on the part of the council. This is why I agree that housing, you know, can move up to the top of the list. I mean, those top priorities, they're all important priorities. We need to have planning to be able to address the kinds of issues that are inherent in the housing. So I see those as related issues, and we need to have adequate municipal staffing so that we can address those. So all three of those priorities are deeply intertwined with one another. Whichever order they come, I think it's a complicated knot that requires us to think in a multi-dimensional way.
Bill, did you want to say something?
Sorry, I interrupted there. Yeah, well, I'll second what Counsel Klepak just said as well. And Jody, I didn't get your last name, but if you can contact my office about the situation you're talking about, it's really not the place to have that discussion tonight, but if you can contact my office, since general assistants reports to me. So we can at least look into the situation and see if I can find a solution for that. The other thing I wanted to say is that we all... At the city level, there are things that we can't necessarily discuss in public because they're delicate situations, but we are working on a daily basis to bring significant employers into the city that will provide additional jobs at a higher-paying level with good benefits. So we're diligently working on that with the Central Main Growth Council as well, constantly working on that. It's not easy to pull a major business into the city. We do have some very good prospects on that. I can't talk... We do have some very good prospects on that that I can't talk about. But, you know, I'm, just be assured that we recognize the fact that, you know, somebody can't make a living or pay their rent or pay a mortgage payment if they're making $15 an hour. It just can't happen. We recognize that. So, we are working on those things. You know, we are, we do know what the problems are. One last thing I'll say is that I know it's frustrating, and it can be frustrating, because we talk about planning, and we can't wave a magic wand. But we have to put all of these things in place and work on these things. I think the city is, has been behind a little bit in trying to attack this. It is a nationwide problem. It is a statewide problem. It is a regional problem. And it takes more than just what the city of Waterville can do. But we work diligently with partners to try to solve these problems. And it can happen overnight, and I wish that it could. I wish I could wave a magic wand, and we'd have, you know, 100 and, 1,000 apartments that were 650 and, you know, were top-notch. It's not going to happen overnight. But we are trying. We are working on these things. So, I'll get off my soapbox from that administrative perspective.
And just to give an example of that, is, you know, one of the things on our list for housing is establishing a new position focused on housing in the city. What that could do is do a better job of leveraging funds to bring projects to Waterville. I mean, we, there is money out there. We need to, we need to do a better job of coordinating and making sure these projects happen. So, that's one example. You know, it will take time. There are short-term solutions, and there are longer-term solutions. We have to look at everything. But leveraging the, you know, the assets we have, which are many. We have many partners in our city. We have funding. We have ARPA funding. We're looking at using that ARPA funding to make a big change in housing as well. So, there are things we're doing. And, yeah, we need to address it.
I got a question. So, does it make sense to move it up to number one, knowing that planning should be number one? And then the housing, because you have to plan in order to get housing. So, or we're just putting it to the top just because?
I'd like to point out, there's no numbers here. I think these are all important, regardless of whether you put it at one or you put it at three. Like, I think they're all going to be addressed equally. Like, I think they're all important, and we're going to address them and give them all the serious, you know, attention that they need. Because they are, this is what we want to work on this year.
I would just note that addressing housing concerns is an issue, and implement planning is a strategy. And that's one reason why I think housing should go first. I agree. I mean, these are all, you know, they don't have numbers. But just even having this conversation is important. And it shows how much the need is there and how complex it is. We certainly do need to get the planning in place and to make that happen.
Well, and just to echo Mike's comments, because it's a goal-oriented thing, we don't necessarily have numbers. Quite frankly, the second item on the list, city staff, is one of those things that's absolutely crucial. Nothing happens without the city staff. And we've already done, taken some steps to recognize our staff with our wage study. And I think that's one of the things that we are, we're going to need to make sure that staff knows that we're, the council is totally behind them. So, I agree with Mike. I like it that we've got our list of things that we're working on. And housing is clearly one of the most crucial ones that we have.
Okay, am I on now?
Yes, go ahead.
That took a while. Anyway, considering everybody's comments, I wanted to bring up a couple of things that Strong Towns can, you know, trying to address with this whole thing. First off, Counselor Green, you brought up inclusiveness. The whole Strong Towns approach is about good land use and good transit, because you can't have one without the other. If people can't get to work, well, then you have a wasted, when you have, if you have a good land use policy but bad transit, people can't get to work or get to home. If you have good transit but bad land policy, they can't, you don't have anywhere to go. There's no point. You just wasted a bajillion dollars on building a giant transit system. But anyway, the point I'm trying to make is that you can't have good, you can't have good transit or, you can't have good transit with bad land use. They have to go hand in hand. And one of the things that we need to do is just abolish parking minimums across the city. Because that way, we can free up that space so that more housing can be built. I'm sorry, Jody, it's not, it's not a magic bullet, but I'm trying my best. But once we've gotten that space freed up and we stop having so many cars everywhere, that space can be built up into housing. That can be built up into businesses. That can be built up into all sorts of things. Counselor Frankie, you were worried about getting things quick and getting them immediately. Unfortunately, Strong Towns can't really build houses overnight. But we do have a thing known as tactical urbanism, where we essentially set up little infrastructure projects, like literally overnight, and just leave them out for a week to get community feedback. We just do them with things like chalk and reflective tape. That way, we can quickly get feedback on the, on infrastructure without having to have people come to us. They just come to us naturally, because we already have that thing, like a bike lane on Main Street or something like that. We have that thing already there for people to experience. They don't have to wait for all of this to get sorted out. Anyway, if we can eliminate parking minimums across the city, that would greatly help the ability of the town to be able to build itself up instead of building out. As long as we can keep building up, that means we can build more housing without incurring bills from constructing more infrastructure. Like, the Assistant Engineer just mentioned a minute ago. It was what, $2.5 million per mile of road? Everyone knows we can't afford that. But if we can stop building more road, and we can get rid of these parking minimums, we can build up in town. So, that way, we don't have to build out that road.
All right, go ahead. And then we have. So, I will ask people to focus on what we're talking about right now, which is the council's, the council's goals.
Yeah, sure. So, hey, Zach Campbell here. Even if you put housing at number one, you know, there's still structural problems. You know, if you're going to actually have housing projects here in Waterville, you ultimately delegate to landlords. And ultimately, in the end, the property is owned privately by that landlord so that you can't do rent caps, and you have a lot more difficult time, you know, setting subsidized housing and having the state kind of pay what's more than a percentage of the folks' income. I've, you know, I said this a couple of weeks ago, you know. Waterville's houses are roughly 65% landlord-owned compared to the state average of 21%. And it is a little concerning, you know, Brandon and Flavia. You guys are, you know, public officials, and you're kind of talking through, like, whether you have a rent cap or the ability to do a rent cap, you know. And you're saying, you know, would people have to sell their homes? Like, I don't necessarily see why that's necessarily a bad thing, you know. Because then, me, I'm paying $1,200 to Keystone every month. I'm closed out of the housing market, while there are people who make their entire living off being a landlord owning three or four houses in Waterville. It's just like, we don't need that. You could seriously just set up a cap and say, you can only have two investment properties in Waterville, and you got to sell the rest. And then, okay, it gets flooded onto the market. It's cheap housing for people like me. I'd love to buy a house here, you know. I just, I don't know if I'll stay here long term if there is no option to buy housing, you know. So, again, and that's with no disrespect, you know. It's just that, you know, you do have the right to cap out, to cap rents, you know. And it would make landlords sell their property. And I don't really see why that would be too big of a deal. So, again, I come at this from a new end. I know you guys don't have, there's nothing you guys can really do. The federal government has largely defanged local governments. Everything that's seriously, you know, the $900 billion that goes off to funneling weapons and funneling our, you know, our military and our defense, if you will. You know, all that, all that money, and this isn't your fault, you know. But all that money is kind of being siphoned out of our communities. And, you know, I can't remember exactly what, you know, Martin Luther King said, but Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. basically said that, you know, our future is essentially, you know, being dropped on Vietnam and, or, you know, in this case, being funneled to Zelensky and the Ukrainian government. But these are all, you know, separate issues. But I get it. You guys don't have a lot of power, you know, and we get that. But you do have some things you can do, so.
Yeah, we do, we do have to, you know, focus on what we can do.
Right, exactly. Right. See, I'm just saying, you know. Again, a lot of this, you know, is stuff that we'll have to organize outside of here, you know. There's really, you know, it's been set up this way, unfortunately.
I think, I think the point is we can work together, and we need to.
Yes, I'm off-topic, and I do apologize. And yes, housing is important and always will be and probably should be number one, whatever. But on the night of March 27th, which actually was the morning, I watched a home burn. And our city, we should be proud of the police and the fire department. Sean did not pay me to say any of this, just to watch. You know, it was a train wreck, but I couldn't keep my eyes off of it. It was a train wreck, but the, they stuck to the guns. It was just amazing. The fire kept getting bigger, and then they'd have it, you know, squashed. And then it would get bigger, but they stood. They were there at, you know, probably five, doing mop-up, whatever. They kept a good eye on it all Monday. This city, we should be proud of our services. That's all I have to add.
Well, I can certainly get behind that, yeah. Patty, do we have anyone online?
No hands raised.
So, I'm not sure where we stand with the idea of shifting priorities.
I think we should just leave it like it is. It's all a priority.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I do think, I do, as I said, I think that the housing issue is fundamental to the city, and that planning is a strategy to help improve it. And certainly, as we've heard, we have an amazing city staff, and we want to support them as well.
Do we have a resolution on the table to adopt this? Or are we just talking and letting people know we're thinking?
We indeed have a resolution, and we can move to a vote now on that.
I'll set for a roll call.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepek?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Good night, folks.